All right. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council scheduled for this October 7th, 2019. It's after 7:30 PM. If you would, Mr. Apollo, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Bestancic?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri and Ms. Warden?
Here.
And I'll note that Mr. Silvestri did contact us ahead of time and said he would not be able to attend because of some family matters. Despite his absence, we do have a quorum and the agenda will be, will remain as presented. This time, I would ask you to stand and join the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on a ground indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item of the, on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the September 16th, 2019 council.
So move, Mr. President.
Motion to approve by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Minutes of September 16th, 2019 are approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President Biden-Dyke and members of council. Nice to see everyone this evening. Just a few things to report to you and then we'll keep this meeting moving forward so we can go see the brown skin tonight. Thanks to the Chamber of Commerce and all the people that helped make Worcester Fest happen. That's really our city's party and, boy, did they have a nice year to do it this year. Both Friday and Saturday evenings and the day Saturday were just about near perfect. So I think it was a really good event for everybody and a lot of fun. So hopefully you got a chance to get down and enjoy it. Over on the table there, you see what the latest and greatest from the way up to Wayne Trails organization. Those are the signs that are going to mark the route between Worcester and the trailhead in Fredericksburg for the Rails to Trail. So those will be going up probably within the next week or two. We're putting part of the signs up and the county engineer is putting part of the signs up. So we will have the trail clearly marked between here and there and hopefully encourage people to utilize those routes. Hopefully, you saw on the paper about the roller property. It is out in the area of Worcester Memorial Park. They sold 34.4 acres to the Friends of Worcester Memorial Park to be part of the whole complex out there of trails and natural enjoyment areas. So that will be coming from the Friends of Worcester Memorial to the city at some point in time. They got, raised the grant monies to acquire the property and do the improvements and then with the intent of turning it over to the city at some point to maintain that property along with the rest of the acreage there. So really, really good things happening out of that group. They're a great team out there. We have two new police officers, Greg Bowersock and Nathan Choppick have been added to the force. We swore them in this past week, so welcome to them and we look forward to having them be part of our PD team here in the city. We have received two grants or the promise of receiving them. The CHIP grant for $350,000 for the housing improvement here in the city of Worcester and a critical infrastructure grant that we applied for with the hope that we might get it. Jonathan's done those in the past for us and we've gotten streetlights in the downtown, both on Market and North Street. And this is for water lines up in the Washington and McKinley Street areas. So about $300,000 coming for that. So real nice additional funds coming into our coffers to help defray some of those costs. And lastly, you have two pieces of legislation in front of you tonight concerning Clear Creek Park. It's something that we've been working with the Seaman family and Daniel Zaniff is Dick and Judy's son-in-law married to Kim and he's here to represent that team before council tonight. If you have questions and things like that, Jonathan will be presenting it to the group here when it comes to. We surely appreciate everything that the Seaman Corporation and Dick and Judy and the family have brought to Worcester with the park. I think it'll be a great addition to Worcester and we look forward to supporting that going through the legislation process this evening. So with that, thank you and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Mayor. We have two petitions, both liquor petitions. If you would read the first one, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Apollo?
Okay, from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, it's a permit request for C1 Red Rover LLC, 1058 West Old Lincoln Way, Worcester, Ohio 44691.
All right, as you folks know, we have a choice of asking for a hearing here in the county, asking for a hearing down in Columbus or waiving a hearing on the petition.
I'd like to motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you call the roll on the waiver of the hearing?
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Bestancic?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
And Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Okay, the hearing will be waived and if you would be so kind, Mr. Apollo, let the department know. That brings us to yet another petition for a liquor permit or liquor license. If you would read that, please.
This one is for the permit classes C1 and C2, Dolgin Midwest LLC, DBA Dollar General Store, number 21228 at 1688 Cleveland Road, Worcester, Ohio 44691.
And again, the same choices, have a ask for a hearing here, ask for a hearing down in Columbus or waive the hearing. What's your pleasure?
I move to waive the hearing.
Ms. Warden moved to waive the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, was that you, Mr. Sanders, that spoke before Mr. Ansel? So we'll recognize Mr. Sanders as having seconded it. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive hearing?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
All right. Again, the hearing will be waived and if you would notify that Department of Liquor Control the waiver, appreciate it, Mr. Apollo. And just so this, Mr. Silvestri doesn't get sideways, there are no communications from the public tonight, so no one signed up on the agenda. All right, committee reports. Last time I checked, I don't think we had any committee hearings since our last meeting and there are no public hearings scheduled. We'll roll right into unfinished business being the second reading of ordinance number 2019 hyphen 17. Would you please read the title, Mr. Apollo?
Ordinance number 2019 dash 17. An ordinance to approve and adopt the recommendations of the planning commission and to amend to the codified ordinance in accordance with those recommendations.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. We went over this two weeks ago in the public hearing. We discussed it in the meeting. We've had two weeks to look it over. I know I've had no comment whatsoever from anyone regarding either side, if either pro or con. So with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council on ordinance number 2019 dash 17.
All right, a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr., or motion by Mr. Sanders, second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders is our second, second by Mr. Myers. Any comments? I see Mr. Dutton is here and would be, I'm sure, welcome to answer any questions that you might have. It seems that, other than some changes which actually, the one part was actually more favorable and less restrictive than previous with regard to driveways and parking, et cetera, most of this looked like that was kind of housekeeping stuff and I assume nothing's changed since the last time you appeared before us, Mr. Dutton.
Correct, because he's after the second question.
Anyone, anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019 hyphen 17 passes. New business. First item before us is resolution number 2019 hyphen 49. It'll be presented by Mr. Bestancic and if I read it properly, it's slated for three readings. Before we get to you, Mr. Bestancic, I will turn to Ms. Apollo and ask her to please read the title.
Resolution number 2019 dash 49. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for concrete repairs, appropriating the necessary funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bestancic, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. The engineering department has seen an opportunity to hopefully get a little more work done on street repairs this, in this season, depending on how fast it can come in and so forth. And this is a request for $400,000 for some concrete repairs on, among other streets of the country lane, I'm sorry, Country Club Lane, Mindy Lane, Maryland Drive, Normandy Drive, Melanie Drive, Brookway, as well as a few others. And this would be also, part of this would be just completing work that's already been started. Some would be starting new work on other concrete streets as well. As I said, it's a $400,000 ask. It is not an appropriated item, but I've been assured that the finance department has looked at this and we do have the funds available for this. And just like to add, as an infrastructure chair, I am, makes me happy to see something like this come along at the end where we can get, hopefully get some extra work done. I've been getting a lot of, actually at work, I've been getting a fair amount of good comments on the state of the streets and what's some of the progress we have been making. So I, and I think we'd like to continue this and keep it speeded up as fast as possible.
Yeah, we're still playing.
Are there any questions with Roger or?
Well, this is the allotment we did last year, 2018, and we didn't have enough funds to finish it, so I'd like to go in and finish it because it's starting to, the cracks are getting bigger. So if we can stop it now and then hopefully we'll have enough money to maybe go up and do some other streets like Edwards and Neal and Sheer Court maybe.
Roger, I have a question. What's the difference in the surface between this neighborhood over near the Country Club and the surface that was replaced on Highland Park?
Highland Park, we, it was concrete, we repaired to concrete, then we milled it and then we put a little Sammy in there, chip seal, and then we asphalted it.
And will you be doing the same procedure?
No, it'll just be concrete repaired.
Okay. And then what's the difference in useful life between concrete and the asphalt?
Concrete has a longer useful life, but it costs more to replace.
Okay.
So cost analysis, it's almost a push.
Thank you.
What you did, if I remember, previously, there were big sections you actually cut out and then re-cemented.
Right, yeah, yeah. We actually went in and we graded all the repairers, one through four, one being the worst. And we actually did all the ones and twos. So we had, still had threes and fours and we ran out of funds. So now there are like twos and threes, so we'd like to go in and fix those.
Mr. Kobelarsik, is $400,000 enough to do what you need to do?
I hope so, yes.
Okay.
All the bids on the bids?
Well, and I want to take this opportunity to say, I do get, I've been getting a number of comments from citizens about how much better and easier it is to get around our city this year with the street repairs. So thank you for doing the planning and work for that, to make that happen.
Thanks.
Very much. Working well.
You have a motion for us, Mr. Bestancic?
Yes, I would motion to take this, I'd like to take this to third and final if we could because there is a time constraint, if we want to try to get some work in, in this season. And the earlier we do this, the earlier they can get the bids, of course.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bestancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Mr. Bestancic?
I'd like to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bestancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Any further questions or comments? Again, this is one of the promises we made with the income tax increase was to provide capital improvements and with Mr. Bestancic, or with Mr. Kobelarsik's department being able to find the best dollar for the buck, obviously, we have some additional monies. So good job by the engineering department and the administration to allow us to spend these monies to fix those streets. Yes, Mr. Myers?
I know we talked during budget season about doing this kind of mid-year. I'm glad to see that we are doing so. I know that a couple of years ago, or was it last year or two years ago, we did the fire truck and some additional streets, but this is always a good thing, being very prudent to wait till we have the money coming in. Are we getting any of the new gas tax funds yet? Is that what some of this is?
None of the things, at least it'll just be general fund monies, but if you remember.
That's kicking in sometime soon though, too, our, like next quarter?
Yes, it actually starts seven, I think, July 1st, which means that this month we'll get the payment for August.
Okay.
Is this a monthly payment we get from?
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, actual tax.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I knew we were going ahead of collections as well, but I just knew that was another opportunity we may have. So keep looking, Mr. Kobelarsik. We could have more for you before the end of the year.
Seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2019 dash 49 passes. Resolution number 2019 hyphen 50 will be presented by Ms. Warden and I have it slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Ms. Warden, I will ask Mr. Apollo to again read the title.
Resolution number 2019 dash 50. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with Aspen Grove Investments for the purchase of land necessary for the construction of Clear Creek Park, appropriating the necessary funds and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. So this resolution is necessary to appropriate city funds in the amount of $176,000 and this will be for the acquisition of Clear Creek Park, which consists of approximately 12 acres located along Venture Boulevard adjacent to the Seaman Corporation and the Aspen Racket Club, which is on the same property. After the acquisition takes place, the city will be reimbursed the full amount through its Ohio, or I'm sorry, Clean Ohio Grant. The Clean Ohio Grant contains funds in the amount of 400 and, approximately $440,000, from which reimbursement will be expected to take place within several weeks back to the city. Grant requirements state that a property must be appraised by an OPWC-qualified appraiser. This appraisal has already been completed earlier this year and the acquisition sum matches the appraiser's valuation. Aspen Grove Investments is the seller of this piece of property and they'll retain $100,000 of the funding to help cover costs that are associated with the construction of a road, box, culvert, and water and sewer utilities, all of which have already been completed. The seller will provide an easement to the city so it can have access to the roadway and to the utility infrastructure. This will give a significant savings for the build-out of the park for the city. Additionally, the seller has generously chosen to donate the remaining $76,000 back to the city of Worcester through the Wayne County Community Foundation. And here it will be used as part of the community's local match for the Clean Ohio Grant and other grants. Funds from these grants will be used to construct approximately three-quarter miles of trail, boardwalks, and an overlook platform that I'm really looking forward to see. All of the required environmental work, design, and bid specs have been completed for this project so far. And once the official, the city officially owns the land, we can finalize our agreements from our other two bids, or our other two sources of funding, the Nature Works Grant, which is approximately 79,000 dollars, and a state appropriation of $300,000 in order to issue the bids. If all goes according to plan, the city expects Clear Creek Park to be open by this time next year. And there will be further projects such as a playground and pavilions projected to take place the following year. I was just informed that there is a organization called TransCanada that has offered to donate $45,000 to, toward the Clear Creek Playground in memory of a former Worcester resident named Wesley Johnson. So we're grateful for that additional and very generous contribution. I'm sure that the community will benefit from. Clear Creek Park will make a nice addition to our city's already impressive park system and it will provide an excellent space for the employees in that area to safely walk and enjoy nature during their lunch breaks. As you know, there's multiple manufacturing facilities over there and so this is a good way for, to keep people off of the streets when they want to go out for a walk during lunch. And this is also a really great example of a local business and the city of Worcester partnering together to benefit the city as a whole. So without further ado, I'd like to make a motion that we move this resolution to third and final reading in order for the administration to begin seeking bids as soon as possible.
Okay, nice presentation. Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there?
Second.
Sorry, I'm sick, sorry. Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Ansel? Mr. Ansel seconded. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended and I turn to you again, Ms. Warden.
Thank you. If anyone has any questions, we have, as the mayor brought up, we have Daniel Zaniff here as a representative of Aspen Grove Investments and we've also got Jonathan Malley, who'd be able to answer your questions more in detail.
Just a quick question, is this going to be the final name of the park? Because I know it's gone through a couple of different iterations.
Sorry, the name, is this the final name? Yes, I believe that.
I'm just curious, is?
Yes, yes, we've had a few discussions and that's what we settled on, unless someone has a problem with it.
I think that Clear Creek runs on the western edge of this, which is a beautiful overlook over that creek. So I know that, speaking with Dick and Judy and the family, that that's what they desire to have as this park.
Okay, thank you.
And the overlook at the end of the park will, will be right there, not the end, but the southwestern point of the park will, it's a beautiful overview and that was the inspiration.
Thank you.
Mr. Ansel?
Ms. Warden, I want to thank you for that very thorough summation. This is a very unique, I want to thank Daniel and the Seaman family representing Aspen Grove Investments for this vision. We've seen the artist rendering, we've seen that whole quadrant go from an abandoned wilderness parcel to a world-class, world premier racket center gracing our community. Then the infrastructure work and the hard work and the collaboration Jonathan and the, Daniel and your team and the Seaman family and the city administration, what a marvelous, world-class.
Absolutely.
Center on the westernmost part of town, as you highlighted, Ms. Warren, that really does need that type, Warden, needs that type of, of that resource. There's a lot of commercial activity there and this will be a very nice respite for people to enjoy during lunch hour or after work. And thank you because this was a very technically complicated deal. And Jonathan, you and your team and the city administration and the Seaman family and Daniel, your involvement, put it all, all the pieces together and everything is fitting perfectly. And what a generous, generous contribution to our community. I just wanted to highlight that and not to really emphasize the complexity of this transaction and what we're going to have as a deliverable at the conclusion. So well done, congratulations.
Thanks for coming tonight, too.
So if there are no further questions, I'd like to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, then would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Okay, the penultimate piece of legislation, resolution number 2019 dash 50 passes, brings us to our final piece. It's resolution number 2019 hyphen 51. It'll be presented by Mr. Myers and it is a budgeted item, so hence will not require three readings, but it will require a reading by Mr. Apollo if she would do so, please.
Resolution number 2019 dash 51. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of Clear Creek Park and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I think this project has been reviewed and elaborately stated by Ms. Warden and Mr. Ansel, so I do not have a great deal to add. Counsel, you've previously reviewed the plans and engineering for this and three prior resolutions, as well as the applications for these grant funds. So now that you've already spent the money, I'm going to get it back. I'm not, Mr. Malley is going to get it back. But we've been awarded these, this series of funds that are going to go towards this park. Again, the three resolutions from 2018 were Resolution 33, 39, and 55. And we've been over the designs and drawings. As Mr. Ansel said, we've seen some renditions and some different plans. If there's no additional conversation or questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this this evening to move forward with the project and collect these funds.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019 hyphen 51 passes and thanks to the Seaman Corp. and everyone involved in making this happen. I've said it a number of times over the dozen years since I've been on council, greatest legacy we can leave to our children, grandchildren, except, et cetera, is extra green space because it's not being manufactured. And once again, this is another piece of green space to allow to leave to our heirs and grandkids. So thank you. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion and we'll start with Mr. Bestancic.
Just one quick thing, again, I just want to thank the engineering department for being proactive on getting this extra piece of infrastructure work hopefully started this season. And that's it.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Ansel?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Myers?
Just one thing, I want to certainly congratulate and welcome our two new police officers, Greg Bowersock and Nathan Choppick, to an already outstanding police force that we have in our community. Glad to have them onboard.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Mr. Zaniff for coming again and representing the Aspen Grove Investments and Seaman Corporation. I think we can all agree that this is a really great opportunity for the city, so we're very grateful for the generosity. very grateful for the generosity, and this probably should go unsaid, but don't forget to vote next month. Election Day is November 5th, and we've got some really fine candidates in this city, as well as several of my colleagues up here, so please remember to get out to the polls, thank you.
And Mr. Cavan of First Ward, will give you the last word.
Well, thank you. Yeah, like she said, please vote. Could use it, but no, nothing to add other than that. I too would welcome the new officers to our city. It's always nice to hear that. I had a question, does that bring us full staff, are we, do we need more still?
We're getting close, we've got three at the State Highway Patrol Academy right now, they won't be done until probably around January, we're down, we need to hire one more. We have somebody who's retiring next year, so we're going to try to replace them as they're in the process of retirement, we're pretty darn close.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
I see Mr. Ansel.
Go Brown's motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers, we're adjourned.